Under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you call the roll, please.
Schmuckel.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Barshew.
Here.
Dool.
Here.
Acustinelli.
Here.
Corn.
Here.
Notice that McManus is absent.
No excuse.
First item on our agenda tonight is public comment. If any member of the public would care to make. Comment on any matter to the board, please come to the podium and be so kind to give us your name and address. I think I'll close public comment now and bring it back to the board for approval of the agenda and statements of conflict. Any conflicts of interest?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have an agenda. Next item is the consent calendar.
Consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-proprietary commercial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask them any item on the consent calendar, be removed therewith and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such request will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have minutes, January 24th, 2023, regular board meeting, recommend approval. General fund bills, fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, seventy-nine cents, recommend approval. The township strategic plan, twenty-twenty-two year-end report, receiving file. Planning commission annual report for 2022, receiving file. Consideration of resolution 2023 point zero five dash zero five T. Resolution recommending approval for an on-premises tasting room for trout possum brewing LLC, recommend approval. There we go. I was thinking it wasn't working. And consideration of resolution 2023 dash zero six dash T. Resolution recommending approval for resort class C and SDW license for Traverse True B and W LLC, recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion?
E. And then quick questions on E and F.
Okay, that's three items, B, E, and F.
B, E, F.
Okay. Is there any other member of the board who would like to remove anything from the calendar?
Sure, I'll have the minutes, A.
Okay. Anyone else from the board? Anyone from the public who would like to remove anything from the calendar? Or staff? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of items A, B, E, and F.
Support. Second.
I would entertain a motion.
A motion?
Okay.
Chris? I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of, was it B, E, and F?
A, B, E, and F, yep.
A, B, E, and F.
And I'll support that motion.
There we go. We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. So we are on to items removed from the agenda and in alphabetical order, we'll start with the minutes now.
Uh, yeah. And in the minutes, under supervisors' report, uh, we've got twenty people identified as chronic homeless. And in the minutes, it says in the township, but I believe it was in the area or in the county.
That is correct. It was the area, so we will, we will correct that.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the corrected minutes?
So moved.
Court.
We have a motion and support to approve the corrected minutes. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to item B.
Quick and easy. Um, under streetlights, there's streetlights township for twenty-two hundred roughly. There's another one due from eight, I don't have my glasses, eight sixty-one streetlights, and there's two line items there. Are our streetlights broke out into different areas or how?
We have three different providers.
Oh, that explains it.
Turb City Light and Power, Consumers, and Cherryland.
That explains it then. I'll make a motion, we approve the minute, or excuse me, the bills, or what is this?
Item B, the bills.
Bills, three B. Court.
We have a motion and support to approve the item B bills. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. All of, all of those that you mentioned are one energy company. They're consumers, right? Bill from two-six, that's consumers, and nine-seventy-three, then the twenty-two oh-six, that's consumers, and then the fifteen thirty-eight, that's also consumers. Then you got a couple from DTE. Another one.
I didn't look that far.
I think some of them get broken up because they're part of, they're paid from our parks fund.
Oh.
Um, so like the lights at the medians and stuff. I think that the Cherryland, or sorry, Consumers bills us separately for those, or we pay them separately to break it out, to come out of a different fund, I believe. But we can ask Laney and get back to you guys about it.
Yeah, let's get them paid, but I don't know the, what is it, the GL numbers? I don't know what those are, so maybe they are different.
And they change them just to make it more fun.
Good question, though.
We'll ask Laney and we'll, we'll have her address it.
Okay.
All right, so we do have a motion and support to approve the bills. If there are no other questions or comments, a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Shep?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Next is item E.
So item E, the question I had on this, trout possum brewing LLC. Are we issuing a brewery license before it comes to the planning commission? Or is that something that's done, needs to be done before it's planned?
The state has accepted the application and has indicated they're willing to do it with the local acceptance.
That's a local acceptance.
If you, if you'd like to speak to it, please come with the mic.
So local acceptance is what they call a local resolution. That's the first step of MLCC approval. So we've already submitted our application to the MLCC, and we basically have said that local approval will be forthcoming. So we're, Trout Possum Brewing LLC is our business name. It's kind of confusing, but our, we're Silver Spruce Brewing on Eighth Street. Trout Possum is just our LLC. Our DBA is Silver Spruce. So, yeah, so Trout Possum, if you're unfamiliar with that name, that's because it doesn't exist here in town. We're Silver Spruce Brewing. And yet, we're basically attempting to open up a second location in the Francisco strip mall.
So you obtain a tasting room license before the planning commission sees the plans on the development?
So the first step of approval is the local approval. So they want to see that your local government is okay with the idea of it, and then the state will approve it, and then the federal has to approve it with the TDB. So it's kind of a three-step process. It starts here.
So is that all done before you do the designs to submit for the plan review?
It's actually separate. So this has to do with our ability to sell alcohol. So everything else will have to go through zoning. So this is separate from zoning. Zoning, zoning will specify parking spaces, seats, occupancy. We'll have to go through fire, mechanical, all of those kinds of things is totally separate. This is strictly to do with the license to sell alcohol.
So I guess maybe you're not understanding what I'm getting at. So let's say you get this, it's all the way through state, all the way through federal and approved, and then you can't get the planning department to allow you to add on if you're lacking something. What then do you do with this license?
Nothing.
Does it just go away?
Yeah.
It does?
I would say so. So I think, um.
If a license isn't used for a certain amount of time, it ceases to exist.
Okay. So this is kind of just to make sure you have the horse to pull the cart?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I just didn't understand that process, and I just had that question.
So there's another step, I think. I think what you're talking about is like occupancy. So really, this is to get the ball rolling to the MLCC.
Okay.
There's several steps along the way between here and there.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion, we approve three E. Court.
We have a motion and support to approve resolution three E. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
And then the next one, Chuck, is maybe a simple one for you to ask, but this one's a class C. Are we limited on how many of those we can pass out?
So they asked for one of our limited licenses, and we told them no. So they went back to the, I said, there are other routes for you to go. They went to the state, and this is a, um, I think it's a resort development license. So they are erecting a hotel. They have spent enough money to qualify for a special above and beyond liquor license. And their interest is primarily in having beer and wine for their guests.
Is it, I thought I read, is it open to the public then too?
Uh, John, you could answer that better than that.
Uh, they're not permitted to have, uh, when the planning commission reviewed that, they're not permitted to have like an open restaurant or anything like that. So that's site plan approval that was granted for True Hotel. So they could have this for their guests and so forth, but it's supposed to be contained within the hotel itself. Part of that is also reasoning behind that is the limited availability to accommodate. Uh, it's, the approval was for a hotel. A restaurant would add in other issues related to parking and circulation and so forth.
Okay.
So as long as it's tied internally to the operations of the hotel, and it's like Chuck mentioned, for their guests, then I would assume that that still conforms with the approval that was granted by the planning commission.
Okay. So what's the one that would allow then public to come in? Is that a C also, but it's categorized differently?
It is not. This license would allow the public to come in. Our, their zoning approval will not.
Oh, so we can, okay, we can put a clamp on it.
We already have.
Okay. All right. That clarifies that question then. Thank you.
Would you like to approve that application?
I'll make a motion that we accept three F. Court.
We have a motion and support to, for item three F. Any questions or comments?
I guess I'm just full of the questions tonight, but getting my answers, I'm learning something.
A roll call report, please.
Dool?
Yes.
Barshew?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. And that's it for items removed from the consent calendar. Onto correspondence. We have our yearly report from the, uh, University of Michigan College of Business rating system. We've got a four star as a, which is down from our five star last year.
I was gonna say, were we five last year? What happened?
We're not perfect.
Do they ever tell you why you lose a star?
Um, I don't know. There was some indication you could find that, did you look it up on the webpage?
Yeah, it wasn't really good indicator why, why it was, but well, we'll shoot better to get back up to five stars in, in 2023. It looks like there's a couple just downward trends there, uh, related to personal industrial property, and then also the non-homestead tax rate. That's the only thing I can figure. So it's tend to be negative. But that could maybe have what we, why we lost a star, I guess.
Yeah, so the state actually changed the law on personal property and how you can tax it. So a lot of the reduction was because of the change in the state law, but I personally think that personal property taxes are kind of dumb.
It's costing some companies a lot of money.
Yeah. Somebody wanted to build a factory in town that made the greatest widget on earth and hire two hundred people, they'd have to have a machine to do it. We would tax that machine. We would tax employees, we would tax the building, but why the machine, I don't understand. In any event, that's my, uh.
Sounds like a Michigan Tea Party coming.
Next item on our agenda, reports. Item A is the county commissioners' report, and we are pleased to have two county commissioners here tonight.
Yeah. Good evening to everyone. Brad Jewett, Greenwich County Board of Commissioners, District Four now, and this is Commissioner Flynn.
District Two.
Okay. Um, not a whole lot to report, but I will say that, uh, on tomorrow's agenda, and we have previously discussed, is the facilities strategic plan. And, um, we've had some good conversations on it, and basically, we're gonna hire consultants, come in and evaluate our operation as a county to see where we can improve our efficiencies and see how we can become better. See if we should consolidate any departments or create departments or anything, but, um, that has not been approved yet. The discussion is still there, and it is on our agenda for tomorrow, so I think it'll be, uh, probably a prolonged conversation on that one tomorrow.
I think Garfield Township would be obviously District Two, a little bit the Lefranyer cap, uh, campus, as well as up there on Hammond and Lefranyer.
Yep. Yep, and that's one thing we're looking to see if we should have maybe our main offices or something possibly on Lefranyer where it's centrally located within the county. But again, we don't have any type of report back from any consultants or anything yet because we have not approved it and they've not started to work. But we're looking probably like around that November time period to have a report back on that. So as that progresses, we will definitely keep you guys informed on that, especially since Garfield Township is the hub of everything, it seems like right now. Our thing is, we both attended last night, as so did several other commissioners, a community forum in regards to mental health. And, um, it was about an hour and a half long, and the panel there brought in some really good topics, and there was really good questions and everything, and it's an hour and a half to try to explain, so I'm not gonna do that. But it is interesting to see the different perspectives on what, um, the, the panel feels that we need for our mental health services for both juvenile and adults and everything. And, um, they talked from programming to housing and everything. So it's still a huge conversation and everything, and it's just, the ball's just getting rolling on that. So beyond attending that and hearing what everybody had to say, I don't have a whole lot to update on that.
They, they did do, uh, they did choose not to take, um, personal questions voice to voice. They wanted everything written down because they will, um, take all questions that the community asked and put it on FAQ, um, and email that out to us. So we'll be able to e that, email that to you to send to your constituents as well.
Then one more thing, everybody's still talking about ARPA, and, um, our administration and the consultants are busy with putting everything together for, you know, we've allocated the money and everything, but, um, we've not awarded the actual monies yet. And a couple of things that keep coming up is, do we, do we, you know, front-load some of these things? Or do we have like a draw type system as we're, you know, kind of like a construction loan? So when they get to a certain level, they can draw money off it. The downside on front-loading is the fact that if some project does not get seen through, we as a county need to try to figure out how to claw that money back if it doesn't willingly come back. So that's, um, still a pretty big conversation piece and everything, but hopefully we have some resolution here in the near future on how we're gonna go ahead and disperse that money and everything. So, I mean, there's, there's certain entities that we're not worried about because we know the projects are viable, they're gonna go forward and everything, like some of the water and sewer projects and everything. But there are other projects that, some of them, if they don't have front-loaded money, they don't think them projects will take off at all. And, um, if that happens, then we're gonna be looking at a pot of money again that we have to reallocate, so. But with that being said, I don't have any, anything else. You know, does anybody have any questions or comments for either one?
Good job.
Thank you.
But like always, my contact information is on the county website, and so is Commissioner Flynn's. Um, feel free to reach out to us. I'm gonna vacate quick because I gotta go to Blair Township, so I just wanted to thank Mr. Dool for dragging out the first few minutes for us, so.
He's got a hot Valentine's Day.
I owe you one, Brad.
Yeah. But anyway, um, like always, feel free to reach out to me or Commissioner Flynn if you guys have any questions or comments.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I have a great day.
Nice to have two of them here.
Yes, it is.
The next item is the sheriff's report.
Good evening. Brandon Brink, Garfield Lieutenant. Uh, I'll start off with the stats here first. Um, had sixty-two tickets written last month for January, had nine injury crashes, no fatal traffic crashes, seventy-eight property damage crashes. Uh, they arrested thirteen drunk drivers again, and sixty-four criminal arrests on top of that, and a total of a hundred and sixty-four crashes. And then just some of the extra things that were done this month, we weren't super busy, but, uh, on the ninth, uh, there was a presentation for fraud awareness stuff at the YMCA. And then on the eleventh, uh, one of our drone guys did a drone flight for Derek and Sean, just for some trespassing issues again up in the North Long and Cedar Run area. And then, um, just to kind of give you a quick update on the two, the new CPO and the school guy. Amanda has integrated right in very well. She works with Brad on our team two rotation, and she's gotten right up to speed with taking complaints, but she's also drummed up some business with, uh, Scenic Ridge. I mean, she's got two classes that she got scheduled for there for fraud awareness stuff. So we're hoping to hit, I'm hoping fifty to seventy-five seniors there with, uh, fraud presentation stuff. And then, um, Makowski, he's been busy. And on the seventh, just one day with the seventeenth last week, there was three school threats complaints, which obviously have been taken very seriously again with some of the, the recent things, and, uh, they take up a considerable amount of time. And then during the time he was taking those three, an assault came in where two kids ended up, uh, getting into a pretty bad assault in the school as well. So the other CPOs were able to come in, take care of the assault, deal with that. Mike was able to take care of the threats complaints and, which took him, he ended up in court in Benzi, and he ended up at houses following up on stuff on Benzi. And, um, just from that West Senior High location, the amount of hours that he spent on those things, like the detectives and the, the other CPOs just wouldn't have time to deal with those complaints. So, um, I've stopped by to visit him. He's got students coming in to talk with him on a regular basis, and yesterday, he spent the entire day doing student interviews, um, with kids coming in, interviewing him on law enforcement reactions in schools and different things like that. And then today, he was at a training for doing train-to-trainer stuff, so we can start working with the teens on safe driving stuff too. So, um, I just want to thank, I, I, the amount of time that he saved with that position already, um, I don't know what's gonna happen with the TCAP spot, I have no idea. I know that there's a position coming, but we don't know what that's gonna look like or where it's gonna be. So I just want to thank you guys for taking on that, starting that position, and it's been a huge help and a huge benefit to the, not only the schools, but to us too and the road guys, so, anyway.
Great.
Awesome. Any questions for me?
Is the sheriff happy?
He's happy.
That's a loaded question.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next is the planning department report for February twenty twenty-three.
Good evening. Your, uh, report from the planning department's in your packet. I just want to highlight a couple of things on page two. Uh, some new applications. We got, uh, Pine Grove Homes, which is currently located down on Thirty-One across from Meyer, is going to be relocating, uh, back to one of its original locations up, uh, top of McCray Hill, next to where the new U-Haul operation is going in. So they have to go through special use permit. That does afford opportunity. At some point, I imagine, we will see redevelopment of that site across from Meyer. It's a sizable parcel, if I recall, somewhere around four to five acres, so could provide some, uh, great opportunities for, uh, commercial improvement in that area. Um, also, we'll be working, um, with the Joint Rec Authority, they're going through in rezoning the, uh, what the property they're acquiring or going to be acquiring, the Hickory Forest property. So we're gonna be moving that into our park and recreation zoning district. So you'll be seeing, uh, some of those properties coming through here, uh, in the coming months. And then just wanted to mention that the Parks and Rec Master Plan was submitted to the DNR by the February first deadline, so we're just awaiting to hear from the DNR in terms of approval of that. Also, the planning commission at its, um, meeting last week did have a little conversation on some of the items that we'll be talking about for your joint meeting on the twenty-eighth. Uh, that, that meeting starts with the presentation by the road commission, and we know that will probably take up most of your time, but, uh, there will be an opportunity to talk with the planning commission. It'll be mostly kind of their efforts, uh, going forward this year for, uh, the master plan update, so, um, should be perfect timing for that. So, got any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Thanks, John.
Next is the Parks and Rec report.
Good evening. Sean Keough, Garfield Township Parks. Um, you obviously have a copy of this report, so I'll try and make it quick and to the point, um, and maybe touch on a few things that aren't in the report. Silver Lake, uh, status quo. Uh, we're working on, um, getting, uh, some prices on new countertop, or new countertop for the men's room, which is, uh, basically delaminating and starting to fall apart. And then, uh, we're also gonna look at, uh, uh, repainting the, the floor in those rooms. There's, they're starting to look pretty nasty, um, from daily use of what happens in a bathroom, so. Um, as Brandon mentioned with the commons, uh, we did do a drone flyover, so I'd like to thank his crew for that, that, uh, that was helpful. We found a couple over by, uh, by Lowe's, one that we weren't aware of, that, uh, they're just old and they need to be kind of cleaned up. But, uh, that bird's eye view definitely helps in, in finding those new locations, so thank you, Brandon. Uh, River East, um, things are pretty status quo there. We did meet with, uh, Jennifer, um, and discussed some possible, uh, kind of like prefab restroom, um, issues or, um, possibilities over there. She's got a design from a company called Huff, I think is what it's called, and they prefabricate, um, restrooms, and they bring them in and put them on a slab after all the plumbing's been done and stuff, but they look pretty nice. And according to Jennifer, they are, uh, less expensive than stick belt type stuff, so, um, that's a, that's a possibility we're looking into. Um, and we were down there today, and there is an excavator on site, so that would tell us that, uh, Elmers or, I think it's Elmers that's doing the ground clearing down there for the dog park. It's going to hopefully start by the end of February, so that's good. Uh, Borden Valley, status quo. Uh, Miller Creek, pretty much status quo. Uh, Kids Creek and the Buffalo Ridge Trail, we were, uh, met with the supplier today, and they dropped off the, uh, tubes and stakes for that massive tree planting that we're gonna do down there. And we were expecting the trees to be delivered around, uh, sometime mid-April, hopefully, and get those in the ground. And we, uh, already have a couple volunteer groups that are looking for things to do, so that will help. And then, um, basically, the only additional information as I have is, uh, tomorrow, there is a Zoom meeting, um, with the, uh, the group that's been meeting for wayfinding from the County Nature Preserve all the way up to the Borden Lake Loop. And there's groups involved from all property owners, you know, basically us and the county and city and so forth, that the, uh, signage is, is consistent all the way through, even though the section of Garfield is ours. So we want the, we want the users to be able to get from point A to point Z without, uh, trying to figure out a new map every time they cross the property line, so. Any questions?
Chris?
Chris? I had a resident call me about pickleball, and I talked to Denise about it recently too, and I remember conversation where Reece Stripe and the tennis courts and the basketball courts, but she said that that's kind of not a plan now.
No, that was not, I mean, that was brought up at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and it was decided that that was gonna stay tennis courts because there is so many pickleball courts around, and those are still used.
At Silver Lake, you mean?
At Silver Lake.
And, um, we actually had, uh, Mike, computer Mike, um.
Computer.
Stephis.
Yeah.
Stephis, thank you.
Computer Mike.
I was drawing a blank there.
G I S Mike.
You know what I'm talking about. Um, he was actually doing some mapping, uh, on his computer, and, um, we were looking at maybe putting in some pickleball courts adjacent to the tennis courts at Silver Lake.
That's not taking the basketball court, though, though, right?
No. It would, well, there was another option of that in terms of maybe, uh, converting the basketball courts to pickleball courts and then building, putting a new basketball court.
Okay. Cause that was the main.
Next to it, just from a layout standpoint.
That was the main concern.
We didn't want to eliminate the basketball courts. We don't want to eliminate the tennis courts. They're both highly used. Um, like you said, there's lots of places to play pickleball.
Yep.
Uh, you know, when you're dealing with pickleball, wherever you put it, you have to obviously take into effect the constant noise of hitting a pickleball and, and the neighbors and, you know, keep it from, you don't want to put it right directly on property lines where it's gonna annoy somebody, so.
Okay. And then Sean did, I talked to your partner, that big tree when we dropped that at Silver Lake. I told them just have, when they drop it, they can chunk it and I'll come get it and take it and split it and use it.
Okay.
Not having to pay to get the whole tree hauled out of there.
Derek got an email from, I might be going out on a limb here, no pun intended, but partials maybe, that they, they were offering a like sign up in February discount type thing for work to be done as, you know, the weather breaks. And that was one of the trees on our list of that. And then there were some trees that are probably need to come out of the dog park just for fear of, you know, they're just popples that aren't very strong and we're a little bit worried about them taking out the fence, you know, if they get any worse.
Yeah, if they go down.
And, but just with the fence in mind and with that road in mind and the power lines, that would be, those would be good jobs for professional tree remover guys versus us. I mean, we could do it.
Sure.
What could go wrong?
Deer chuck.
That's the big question mark.
Anything else? Yes, Chris.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Is there ever time that you?
Steve here, I get it.
Yeah, we're competing. That you saw the wood that's cut down?
What's that?
Is there ever time that you saw that wood or the trees? Like if somebody wanted to buy that or, or do we just, are they just like not what somebody would reuse for projects and stuff like that?
Uh, I don't think, the popples in the dog park, I don't think would be of any value. They're not very big trees and most of the ones we've, we started tagging them yesterday. Most of them are rot marks halfway up and yeah, they're very soft and they're just not good for anything. And the one out by the, the road has been dead for quite a while, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And if somebody else in the township, you know, that's watching this meeting, watch that firewood, they're welcome to it. I was just trying to save us money and not have it to chip the whole thing up. I mean.
Yeah, right.
It's big though. It's going to have to be split. It's.
Yeah, it's got to be cut and split and I can load it with my tractor. I mean, I have the equipment to get it out of there, but they got to top it and drop it. Cause when we looked at it, we're either going to take out a car or a power line.
Right. Or potentially both.
Or both.
We have a question of liability. We had our first workman's comp claim for somebody who was working in an election, stepped outside, slipped and ended up in the hospital.
Oh, gosh.
So we're, we, we covered all of that, but it's kind of a eye opener because we always figure that we're, we're just golden. Those things don't happen to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe they do.
Well, and if the liability becomes an issue, partials is going to haul the logs off. I'll just have them bring it to my place and dump it. Instead of taking it to their place and doing it, which I live with, what, quarter mile from there? So we could always talk to them and take that liability away.
Yep.
And let them bring it and dump it and we're done.
Works for me.
Okay. That's an option.
Good.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks for the big print too again.
Like the big. Next item on our agenda is the Treasurers' Report.
All right. And I apologize for the tiny print. It's hard to fit all this on one page. Get your magnifying glass out for that. So yeah, there's a lot of numbers here. Hopefully you guys all got a chance to review it. But the biggest things, the biggest, yeah, biggest things that happened last in the quarter, last quarter of twenty twenty-two were that I opened up some Michigan class accounts, which Michigan class is an investment pool type of account that provides really good rates to municipalities and schools and it's liquid. It's cash. So
Oh, nice.
Right now the rate is four point five three percent and you can withdraw it at any time and the net asset value stays at one dollar, which means you always get your full principal back. So I opened up some accounts for the general fund. I put a million dollars in and then for water and sewer, we're keeping that, those separate, a million for each of those. And I'm going to probably reevaluate and probably put more in there because why not? It's liquid and it's earning good interest. So any questions though for me on anything else? I did include this this time just because our, the pie charts, because our investment policy requires that I break down the types that we have to, so you know we're diversified. So that's why that's in there. I thought I would put that in every time, but I'm, I put it in this time since the end of the year. But any questions for me or anything?
I was just going to mention that the same as what you found there, Fidelity does the same money market account.
Oh, okay.
One dollar per share and they're paying four and a half right now and they're expecting it to go up to four and three quarter within the month.
Okay. Fidelity. Yeah, I don't think they have any accounts with Fidelity, but.
And it's a money market account. It's the same thing. And that's a pretty good rate. There's no risk of losing.
So many of them, you know, are improving their interest rates. So.
Yeah, right now. Yeah.
Any of these, you know, where you've got point two oh percent.
I know. I know. That was kind of just at the time and we try to, Gene always tried to ladder them and I try to ladder the CDs too. And that's kind of, they're a lot higher right now. So it is kind of a bummer, but it's part of laddering the portfolio.
Yeah, yep.
Awesome.
Okay. There's no other questions for the Treasurer. We'll move on to the Clerk's Report, which you have in writing before you. We are, we're just contacted by our audit crew and they're coming in soon to begin that. So it's always fun.
Oh, yeah.
Lainey gets a little grumpy. It's okay. Last but not least, the Supervisor's Report. Lot going on. This, the mental health group is looking for a location for a emergency mental health clinic. So kind of like we have an emergency room for medical. They would like, there's a empty building on Royal Drive, which is pretty much all doctors, offices and medical type of facilities. And they are looking at that as a location. It would require some modification to the zoning. So the conversation has been had and we're, we're looking at it. I don't know if it's going to come to fruition. But it is one of those things that they spend a lot of time and money trying to handle people who are having a mental emergency. It's, they're, you know, transporting them to other parts of the state, which means we lose an ambulance while they're, you know, running five hours down, five hours back. Or they tie up a bed that could be used by someone else and they're not really getting the kind of care they need. So this is, as he said, they had an hour and a half presentation on it last night. It's a pretty, and I think Chris deals with it a lot at the county jail. And I think a lot of our homeless problem is due to mental health issues, not really because they're, you know, unable to do things. They just can't keep together for long enough to hang on to things. So we're interested in helping, but as I told them, we don't, we don't want another goodwill in. Thank you. We had our first Board of Public Works meeting in this month after no meetings in December and January because the county software was not doing what was necessary to put the agenda together. Kind of an interesting story. The, the indoor sports facility group that's been meeting is, still meeting, we're meeting next week. There's, you know, where you can't just step in and shut down what's going on. So the school still has their projects going on where they're going to have, they're going to build on to both Central and West and have some kind of a intention is they'll have an indoor soccer field for winter. The, there is a group that wants a facility that's large enough for big tournaments. And I think the property that Olson's has out on Thirty-One South is ideal in that it has the traffic problem solved. You have, you can go east, west, north and south from there. And there's a state highway. Everything is pretty good and there's room for it to happen. So that's some, we're still pushing. We'll see what happens there.
Would that be a multiplex building? Like can do numerous things?
Yeah. Yeah. Would ideally it be, you know, where you could have practices for different organizations at the same time. Or as I said, if you bring a group up here for a tournament.
What I mean is, is it strictly like soccer or is it multiple sports?
It'd be multiple sports. They're thinking if it's the right size, it could be like softball.
Holy cow, that's going to be a tall.
Could be nice though.
Wow.
And would they use it for other venues other than sports like entertainment?
There's a potential for performance of, you know, music kind of thing.
Boy, that would be interesting and neat.
It would be. We'll, we will keep you informed what happens there. We are hosting a housing meeting here at the township. I think it's late next week. Basically it's going to be Acme, East Bay, the city, Garfield and the county to talk about where we're going in terms of housing. So we have some strong opinions. We'll, we'll put it that way. It'll be interesting to, to hear what the others have to say.
So who's invited to that?
I know. I think it's the supervisor from each township and Marty from the city. And Chris and Nate both, I believe, from the county.
Is it more based on not so much adding housing, but adding housing that people can afford?
It is, that's, it's, there's a lot. It's, you know, there's no set agenda. And again, I have a hard time with afford because somebody afforded every house in our town. You know, the multi, the million dollar homes on Silver Lake are on Greyhawk. Somebody afforded those. It's, it's not a question of affordability. Garfield Township has more means-based housing than anybody. Where the housing prices, the, their costs are determined by your ability to pay.
Yep.
It's, it's politically incorrect to say subsidized anymore, but it's means-based now. But we have that and there's, you know, there is, where do we go from here? You know, there's, there are a lot of people claiming we have to build more housing. We are building housing, you know, and across a wide variety. I think this board and our planning commission have both shown a strong preference for single-family homes as opposed to additional apartments. So we'd like to, will be a part of the process. We'll be there, but I don't know that we are going to be the, the primary source, you know, for future means-based housing.
And just one thing on that, when we went out, did the survey in our township, that's what the people said.
Correct.
We want single family. You guys have so many apartments and all those kinds of things. We want it to still feel like home. So.
Yeah. I think it was interesting because that's what our, both of our boards had indicated was their preference. And then the survey came back and reflected the same thing. So it's, it's not a wild idea.
Right.
What else do we have exciting here? Water. The, we are looking at with the new development going on, on the Olson property, we are looking at what we can do to get water to the top of the hill. We want to, we don't want to miss the opportunity because once things are built, it's hard to go back and retrofit. So we may, we have to have some serious conversations about our ARPAD dollars. I had a, early on I, you know, stated I had a preference for parks because I felt parks benefited the entire community. But there's a strong case for investing in water and sewer infrastructure as well. So maybe a special study session in the near future?
In a way, it still does benefit the public. I mean, if the sports complex goes in and needs water, it benefits everybody that goes there for concerts or whatever. So I mean, it's a, it's a benefit. It's just a kind of a weird outdoor, it's a different way to look at it than a park.
Yeah. And when the other thing is, is something like that would be a economic stimulus.
Right.
Which would, you know, I think our, our township taxable value, which just got to a million a few years ago is now at a million five.
Wow.
So we are, you know, becoming more and more of an economic engine for the area. Something like that would help. It'll bring a lot of people in. It's the, the tourism people are focusing on fall, winter and spring. They don't, they, they don't need to sell summer. That's their attitude and they're right. People come here in the summer beyond what we can handle. The more people we can get up for tournaments, concerts, whatever you have through the other seasons, that's going to be a, a very good effect for us.
And as the Planning Commission works on the master plan, hopefully we'll have more discussion about housing and smaller lots and different things. And so having water and sewer, having that discussion at the same time would be real beneficial.
Yeah. I think the back part of that parcel under their new zoning is still housing. Is that correct, Jen? For Olson's?
I think it's our three, the back.
Uh, it's multi-family.
Full multi-family?
Yeah.
And that can't be done without.
Well, that can't be, but going to, you know, a less density. If you, you can do that if you have water and sewer, but you can't do it if you have septic and wells. So, you know, might smaller lots, you know, maybe look at some other ideas than, you know, two hundred by two hundred.
That sounds like a planning and zoning issue.
It is. And that's why I'm saying master plan, we'll be talking about it, but we got to do the water and sewer kind of alone.
Yeah. We got a lot of serious people on that planning commission, don't we?
We do.
So that concludes my report. Unless there are any other questions and we will move on to new business. Item A is public hearing.
unfinished business.
Whoa, whoa. We don't have any, we don't have any unfinished business. You know why? You know why? Because we're awesome.
Get next time.
We'll go to new business. Item A is a public hearing for consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four dash T, an amendment to the Flood Plan Management Ordinance seventy-two.
So this is a, it's really a, a pretty simple thing. You have a floodplain management ordinance already on the books in Garfield Township. And then FEMA recently completed a new study for the Borden River related with the, related to the dam removals. So they, that study now does need to be referenced in the floodplain management ordinance. So it's just basically replacing that reference so that it could be to the most current floodplain insurance study, which is effective April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Pretty simple, straightforward amendment.
Question for John. Do we have that map on our website so that, you know, railtors in particular are interested in what's in a floodplain and what's not in a floodplain and what, who needs flood insurance and who doesn't need flood insurance? And so if they've changed it, it would be good to make that available.
Sure, we can do that. Most of what, the best way to access that is through the FEMA's website, but we can see about putting maybe some PDFs or something like that.
That'd be great.
So the, it is not changed to. So the, it is not changed dramatically, and we do need to update it to be able to offer our citizens the flood insurance. Typically, they want that because the bank wants them to get it, and so.
That's it.
So if, I, we would entertain a motion to.
Business of public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
I got that part.
Something I would've done.
Slow down.
Slow down, supervisor.
We will now open a public hearing regarding the amendment to res, to our floodplain management ordinance seventy-two.
They got nothing.
We will now close the public hearing and come back to the board for consideration of adopting.
I would make a motion that resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four dash T to amend ordinance number seventy-two, floodplain, floodplain management ordinance be adopted.
Support.
We have motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Agostinelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barshew?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
That is unanimous approval, thank you. Item B is consideration of a proposal for Flock safety cameras. We have a representative from the sheriff's department, the detective bureau, no less.
We have a Flock member from the Flock of the sheriffs?
Be careful.
I know.
Welcome. Thank you. So I think all of you have a letter that I sent just with the recommendation that we had. You'd see in there that Flock did do their study, came back with some tiered recommendations. And we looked at that and found just a couple holes based on our information that we have as far as where crime happens and some additional stuff. So we, we came back with what we looked at as fourteen cameras we thought would be, what would sufficiently cover the township at this point for us to really make a difference in our investigation. So we appreciate any consideration you would give either to that number or, or another number that you see fit.
Question for you.
Yes.
Can we get a map of where you guys think they should?
Yeah, so what we had talked about doing with other townships as well as the, um, is we would prefer to do that in more of a closed setting where we could share those camera locations. Obviously, we don't want the public to know where all the cameras are at for obvious reasons. So, but yes, we would do that depending on the recommendation that you folks see fit with tonight. We would go back then and design based on the number of cameras that you guys see fit to where we would want those. And then we could, um, I don't know how that, how we do that, but come into like a closed session thing, and we could kind of explain that if needed, so. There is no, there's no closed session, okay.
Not unless we're buying property or disciplining some.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So the twenty-eight fifty per camera at fourteen is thirty-nine thousand nine hundred, is that the cost per year?
So the cost, it would be.
First year.
So the first year is the, so the twenty-five hundred, the twenty-eight fifty, to be easy, covers all of the implementation costs, the cameras and everything for one year. We do know that the price of those cameras are gonna go from twenty-five to three in April of this year.
Oh, no.
So that would be the historical cost, if I'm using that term correctly, for like after the first year. We likely look at those cameras being at three thousand. But the, um, the three fifty per camera installation, that's like a one-time fee to get those put up in their desired locations.
So if we went with a two-year contract, we're thirty-nine nine the first year and then thirty thousand the second year?
Yeah.
If we lock it in.
Yep, and I had talked with Flock actually earlier today, just saying that if there was a two-year contract, that that would lock in the twenty-five hundred per camera for two years, and I was told, yes, that is correct.
That's what I understood.
Yeah.
I have a question for our supervisor.
Yes.
Can we take this out of the general fund?
Uh, we can, yeah.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we do this.
Quick question, sorry. Could you extend the term even longer, like three years, four years? Because it, I mean, this is a pretty good project, I think.
You can, when we were in discussions with them, they said that they have contracts out there with, with entities that are one year, two year, five years, so.
I just wondered if they would be willing to offer that twenty-five hundred for like, say, four years? If we're, if the board would be comfortable?
That's a good idea.
Just a thought.
No, that is a thought.
We can, uh.
We could motion it with.
We can make a motion to approve this in terms to be negotiated and brought back to the board.
I make a motion that we approve the thirty-nine hundred dollars for the Flocks. And with negotiations for contracts for an extended period of time.
Support.
All right, we have motion and support to accept the proposal and bring the final proposal back to the board after negotiations.
Very good.
So just to clarify.
Questions or comments?
Denise said thirty-nine hundred.
Thirty-nine thousand, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on record properly.
Fourteen cameras, right, total?
Fourteen, I just, I just calculated it, it was good. My calculator didn't lie to me.
Thirty-nine.
And I just referred to the proposal.
Yeah, and that covered it right there, but, yeah.
Yeah, I would like to see that we could possibly, if we're gonna do it for thirty-nine nine, and if we could lock in twenty-five hundred dollars and do it for four years rather than one year. But that's negotiable with them, so if you could bring that back to us, that would be awesome.
Absolutely. Yeah, and thank you, I just, you know, I was sitting here at the, at the board, listening to you guys talk about the development of Garfield Township too. That's kind of exciting for you guys and maybe even more of a reason to, you know, do something like this where we can really do a, do a great job for you. And obviously, we've had the, geez, I've been with the sheriff's office now for about twenty-eight and a half years, and we've had this relationship with Garfield Township ever since I was a rookie deputy here. And it's just been fantastic working with you guys. And, um, yeah, so we look forward to being able to utilize this additional tool for not only your CPOs, but for our detective bureau and for the rest of our agency to help, uh, help, uh, make the people in this community as safe as possible, so.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
So just to reflect on that for a minute, what is, what we get back in our surveys tells us that one of the reasons people wanna be here is because it's safe.
Great.
So thank you.
We wanna keep it safe.
I just have one question. I'm just curious what the response was from the other surrounding townships in the city. Do they seem like they're interested in doing it too? It seems like it'd be more effective if we all did it, but I was just curious.
Yeah, so, um, where we're at currently, I think, um, the undersheriff had mentioned last time that we had approached Garfield Peninsula Townships and East Bay Township initially. So the reason the undersheriff's not here tonight is because he's at the Peninsula Township Board Meeting, in two minutes, with the recommendation for them. So he's there now. I know East Bay had, um, a super-packed agenda with short-term rentals, I guess, and everything, and they thought their meeting was gonna go super long. So we'll be on their agenda for next month, so that's kind of our, but they were interested in having the study done. We did do that study, so we have a, um, that I just got back yesterday, so I'll be working on a recommendation. Cause you're exactly right, I think, um, once we know, uh, specifically from my perspective, if East Bay Township is gonna be on board and the number of cameras that they might be looking, you know, then we can kind of mesh those a little bit at borders of Garfield and East Bay, since you guys meet there, um, you know, to make it even more effective, so. Yeah, but, but great response from the other two townships.
Are you relatively confident that the state police are gonna get their cameras on the highways?
Yeah, so I can tell you what I know, I talked with Captain Smiley, he's out of the headquarters in Lansing. I talked with him a week, week and a half ago. They actually have entered into a contract with Flock Safety, which is, again, like we were talking about Kent County having cameras, um, which has helped us solve some crimes already in Garfield Township. They are putting them up on freeways down in the metro Detroit area currently. And he did talk about some expansions onto like the highway. And I don't know how far out they are with this, but we're in the seventh district for the state police. And, um, he believes that they will, at some point, start moving more toward northern Michigan, which would also help us out too. Did that answer your question, or? Yeah.
Is the city, did you mention anything about the city, are they on board with that?
Yeah, so, um, they, the two city detectives who were here at the last meeting when we presented, they are meeting with the DDA for the city tomorrow to talk about implementation of cameras in the city of Traverse City. Flock is a part of that proposal as well. I don't really know any more than that, other than that they are meeting tomorrow for, for whatever they're gonna talk about for downtown cameras.
Thank you.
All right, if I'm not mistaken, we have a motion.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Christopher did.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna do a roll call for spending money?
Money.
Not spending money till we get a contract.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right, okay.
But thank you for asking.
All right. I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is consideration of applying for Michigan National Resources Trust Fund Development Grant for the Grand Traverse Commons Natural Area Design Plan. Mr. Syke?
Sure, this is just a request now that we, the town board has adopted the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which includes the Natural Area Design Plan for the Grand Traverse Commons. So that, this gives direction to staff to go forward and apply for a development grant for implementation of that plan and making that application to the DNR Trust Fund that will have to be in by April one. There is a public meeting that's required as part of that, that we'll all have to meet that. But we're pretty confident that we can put in a, a good application and go for a development grant. We'll be applying for the full amount, which will be up to three hundred thousand dollars to help offset some of the costs. I think having the, the design plan in place for that park as well as knowing that this is a legacy of the state of Michigan, and we've taken on some of their property and trying to fit along with the same kind of retrofitting of the old state hospital. This should, in my mind, should score highly with the DNR Trust Fund, but we'll see how that goes.
I did have a question, we talked about that at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting the other day, that we do have to have a public hearing on that, correct? Now, do we have to have it at the township board level or at the Parks and Rec Commission level?
Uh, I don't recall, and I don't know if it's necessarily.
It'd be at the township board level if there's a public hearing required.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a public hearing or a public meeting, but either way, we have to have something like that.
Yeah.
Right, we have, so we have to, that's the question I had, whether it had to be at this level or at the Parks and Rec Commission level.
Yeah. I don't recall there was a public hearing before on grant applications.
Yeah. Either way, it'll be at both, we'll schedule it because we'll, we'll have it in for the Parks and Rec at their next meeting and then obviously bring it here for the, for it to approve its submittal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
I make a motion, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to direct staff to prepare and apply for the Michigan National Resource Trust Fund Development Grant for the initial implement, implement, yeah.
Implementation.
Thank you, of the Grand Traverse Commons Natural Area Design Plan.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, the next item is consideration of upgrading the new traffic signals on Seventy-two West. And when it came down to it, there were three townships that exist at that corner, Elmwood, Long Lake, and Garfield. And Elmwood and Long Lake have both said, no way. So I don't think it's, uh, our township is gonna shoulder that.
No, that whole cost?
So I think we can just remove that item.
Sixty to eighty thousand per signal? Wow.
Okay.
Okay.
But they're pretty, they're very pretty poles.
Are you just talking about the?
Just that intersection of.
And seventy-two that we're not?
Gray and seventy-two.
Right, what about the US thirty-one, thirty-seven at Meyer Drive and the, and the US thirty-one at Marketplace Circle? At those two or not?
Those two would be.
Those are all great at Garfield Township.
Mm-hmm, and they would be available.
Are these the ones that sense traffic sitting there so you're not waiting for the light to turn? Are these more of a high-tech traffic light?
They are part of the system, the scoot system that the state is using on the highways now. Grand Traverse County Road Commission is using the same system on South Airport Road. I don't know if you've driven it recently, but it is actually flowing better.
It is.
So they have a computer that measures the number of cars at each location along the road and then times the lights to allow.
Movement better.
Movement, and then also to allow gaps. So people who are pulling out have room to get out on, make lefts on the highway.
So what about the two that are in our township?
Um, those, those would be our, potentially could be ours, yes.
And I, I haven't heard a lot of complaints about traffic flow, particularly at those. Because coming out of those, you don't have that much traffic, it's not like.
Yeah, but you do out of the, out of the other way.
Marketplace.
Yeah, Circle, you have a lot.
At Myers, you don't have a lot coming out of Walgreens. So it's really just three directions, north, south, and, and coming out headed west. Well, in both of those situations. So I don't know, do we wait until we have problems with it or be proactive?
I don't think it's about problems, I think it's about appearance.
Oh.
Cause they're gonna design a box system which will duplicate the arm system, but it's not as pretty.
We like those arms.
Yes.
But they are pricey.
Yeah, so recently, the one project, the last time they brought a project forward, it was South Airport and Park. And we did not, we went with the plain wire box. And then they did the intersection, the road commission did the intersection of.
Silver.
Silver, or, um, Barnes and Long Lake.
Right.
And without any contribution from the township, they put the arms up. They're not very attractive, but they were free.
Well, we have the arm at Silver Drive and, um, Silver Drive and Long Lake and, uh, and, uh, West Silver Lake Road, don't we, going into the Commons?
And at Zimmerman and Silver Lake, they're same thing. We have put them up in the past and they.
They're pretty.
Yeah.
And the ones we put up are pretty.
But the cost is somewhere between sixty to eighty?
They're costly.
I mean, they're not giving us, it's just, I'm taking that, that it ranges twenty thousand?
Um, I believe if you're dealing with a two-lane road or, uh, you know, a smaller road, it's gonna be less expensive. Those arms that go across the three lanes are a little more.
We don't see a problem, I, I'm thinking we wait till they'll come back next year and do, or see if the road commission feels like it's something that needs to be.
Yeah, they're just looking for the mast arms is basically what they're doing.
So I could probably get some more information and, uh.
Especially for those, for one and two.
Yep.
Because we know three, we're not gonna do it because it's other townships that are involved, right?
Yep, that one's out.
But I think if we do one and two and get more of information, are they gonna look like the ones that we have now that look nice?
Right.
You know, if we say yes, we're gonna do this, and it turns out they don't look that good.
Chris?
I think she had one.
Well, you mostly answered it, but I did kind of want the history, I guess. You kind of answered it on which ones we've done in the past and why we've chosen to do some. And is it something that we wanna look at upgrading or, just to improve the aesthetic of Garfield Township? I don't know how the board feels about that, but it kind of improves the quality of the community when you're consistent and it looks nice. But I don't know, in the past, when we've done, I know the Silver Lake and, yeah, but the state hospital at Frankie Road.
Yeah.
Um, did we decide to do that one too?
That one was decided a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was in because we wanted something that looked nice because the Commons was being developed and, and, uh.
It was kind of the entrance to the township from the city.
Right.
Yeah, at that time, I think the discussion was, well, you know, maybe the things that are more metropolitan, we'll look at those, those kinds of additions, expenses.
And the reason I think we did not do it at Park and South Airport was because that particular one, the posts had begun to degrade.
Right, I was just gonna say that.
The paint was not holding up.
Right.
So they ended up. So, they ended up not looking good.
Right, yeah.
And they're powder coated, so you just can't go out there with a spray can and fix it.
But the question, I guess, I would have is, are they going to look as good as the ones that we have put up? You know, if, I don't want to spend the money for sixty to eighty thousand dollars if they're not going to look as good as the ones that we did.
Okay.
Well, if Chuck goes back and asks them for maybe something, give us some pictures, color, or, you know, what, what is, what's going to be involved? What are they going to look like, so we can see if we like them, I guess?
Yeah.
Cause I, I agree with what you said.
Yeah, and can they match the ones that we already have?
John's got a question.
I'm sorry, John?
Yeah, just, I just, I looked at, when I saw this on the agenda, just look what you have in place right now where we have masked arms. There's five locations. There's Hammond and Lefrainer, and Hammond and Keystone have them, and these are all green ones. As you mentioned, Silver Lake and Frankie has them, Silver Lake and Zimmerman, and then South Airport and Cass. And then there were some, like at Park and South Airport, where they're not masked arms, they're just green poles, and then they have like a
Right.
arm, a small arm with just the lighted box with the street name. And I think those are also up on Silver Lake and Copper Ridge Drive, and then Silver Lake and Barnes. So, those aren't the masked arms. So, you got five locations where they're, they're green ones. There is one at South Airport and Town Line, but that looks like that was installed when the airport went in, because the color is, uh, kind of a beige color, which looks like the signposts that they have in the airport.
Right.
So, I don't think that was done right in the township.
That information, and like Steve said, maybe get pictures of them. If they're going to look as good as the ones that we've put up, we may consider it.
Yeah. We will put that on the agenda for our next meeting, and we will have more information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I think Crystal had a question. He passed it, or comment, he passed it on to me.
I, I kind of feel it needs to be like a, a plan, like you want to beautify, like Chloe said, people coming into the township. I know people had talked about putting a sign at the southern part of it, by Werfel Park, or Turtle Creek Park now. But I, I think it, you'd want to kind of make it as a beautification plan to spend that kind of money, instead of just, you know, let's just put one up, right? Let's have a plan. What is that plan going to be, and does that include it in it? So, I like the idea. I kind of feel like majority of traffic comes into the township via Thirty-seven from southern Michigan, and this would be a good, hey, welcome to our area, neat, clean, professional.
Exactly.
All right, I will have a conversation with Mohammed.
Mohammed?
Maybe we could even get ones that you could put like, like those flags on them, or like those banners.
What?
Put downtown, or you got banners, no?
Oh, no.
No, no.
I don't think, no.
Uh-uh.
Okay.
That's not beautification, sorry.
It's cluttering.
Yes.
You can swap out the flags for every season and every event, you know?
Yeah.
Football game.
Every sporting event that's going to come through that area.
It'll be beautiful.
Yeah.
It would be beautiful.
So, the last item on our agenda today is consideration of nominating Fern Spence to the ZBA for a second alternate. The board had indicated that they wanted two alternates for this position. And we appointed Steve, and we had no second applicant, so Fern saw that and has decided to apply.
You just answered my question. I didn't realize that we wanted it. Okay, so she would be the second alternate. Okay, I understand now.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
Was that a motion?
I will move that we put Fern Spence on as alternate two of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Support.
We have a motion and support to appoint Fern Spence to ZBA alternate position.
Perfect.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Had to answer my question before I could ask it.
I hate it when that happens.
Hate it when that happens.
That brings us back to public comment.
We forgot to say is that the Board of Commissioners, Lauren Flynn, County Commissioner. They are looking for a community action group or advisory group for the mental health building that they're trying to look for to build. So, residents can apply or sign up by emailing CAG, C-A-G, at UnitedWayNorthwestMichigan.org. So, that's UnitedWayNWMI.org. So, C-A-G at UnitedWayNorthMichigan.org.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? We'll close at public comment and come back to the board for other business. Denise?
The twenty-eighth, he had mentioned about the joint.
Metro Board?
No, that, no, I'm, I'm talking about John, sorry. Hi, Chris.
Road Commission.
The, um, twenty-eighth about the joint. Are we starting earlier than six?
Six o'clock was, I think.
Okay, are we still going to have our regular meeting then?
We will have a, um, in terms of addressing that one issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, cause I was just wondering, because I know that there was things that we were going to be bringing, be, bringing back in two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay.
In recent, in a little bit kickoff of hers, this meeting that we have every year, it's always the second meeting of February, and I'm always gone the second meeting of February. Is there a chance in future years we could move it to another timeframe? Maybe the second meeting in March, so I can be here, because I can't move the event that we go to every year.
Well, we have two people going to be gone the twenty-eighth then.
Yeah.
Molly and I both are gone.
It should be a nice, short meeting.
Are you suggesting?
You know what, I learned so much, Chuck. You, you, you left the board, fill me in on all my lack of knowledge, and look at, I leave here smarter every time.
I mean, is it set in stone?
No, it is not set in stone. It's pretty much a ad hoc thing, where there's no, there's no policy there at all.
Possibly another time, because, I mean, Molly's our representative for planning, and she's not going to.
This one's already set.
We don't even do one every year. It's not a.
Yeah.
So.
This one might be too hard to move. I guess I'm just requesting like next year.
Yeah, this, we got the road commission coming in to do.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not saying this one, but in future years, because I, this last week of February, we're always gone.
Yeah, it is, it, well, like I said, it wasn't a policy to do February twenty-eighth, it just happened twice.
Okay.
That's why I'm mentioning.
Okay.
No big deal.
We'll do that.
So, we're still going to have a regular board meeting to bring the other things up? That's the question I had. Thank you.
And the, um, other, I would like to mention that the Northern Lakes Community Church, which is right across the street essentially from West Senior High, uh, has a application in for a daycare center. And they are going through the process. They had to get their permits, and one is a permit from the Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works has a different calculation for daycare centers on benefit fees. So, and they're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty thousand dollars for benefit fees. And they are working with a donation funded budget, so they don't have eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. Trying to find some basis for adjusting the charts, because some of these charts were adopted twenty years ago, and there's, there are no daycares right now on municipal water, so we have no way to judge what kind of water use we actually have. So, it's, I'm having a rough time making an adjustment there. We may consider using some ARPA money there, because I think that would be, it's a, it's a community need. It is an infrastructure need, and it's not a ongoing cost. It is a one-time thing. But, um, I'm still looking to see if there's some way we can.
It's collected from DPW. Would DPW do an adjustment, not, rather than Garfield Township fund the money? It's, Department of Public Works is going to do an adjustment for daycares or for something else. I'm just concerned about the precedent of, okay, this is a private business. I know it's a need in the community, but, you know, do we, is that a way we want to go, or is there a way that we can?
As I said, my first choice would be, in the past, we have documented, like apartment complexes, we were charging every apartment one benefit fee. And I had some complaints from developers that that didn't make any sense. So, we went through and did a study, and we found that a typical home, single-family home in Garfield, which is what they call one REU, residential unit equivalent, uses about four hundred gallons a day, and a typical apartment uses two hundred and one. So, it was very close to fifty percent. So, we changed our ordinance, because it's in our ordinance to reflect each apartment is one-half benefit. But I don't have any information on daycares. So, it's, it's kind of a, I don't, it's a critical situation in terms of, there are a lot of people who are hurting for daycare.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, I, it's, it's just a heads up, I may, we may figure out a way to, we may find something through one of the national groups or state groups. But, um, that is something I'd like to put on your radar for potentially as a use for ARPA money. Chris?
The Mental Health Crisis Center, I know that's, we kind of went by that, but what organization is driving that? Is it Northern Lakes?
Yes.
Okay. And is it going to be a crisis residential?
No. They're, they have, they want to do a crisis residential as well. This one would be crisis.
Emergency?
Emergency room. So, if somebody is having a, an episode that they just need immediate care, they can, they can take them there, and they will immediately be brought in and treated appropriately. It's that, it's possible that there would be no overnight there at all. That's one of the things that we ran up the flagpole, because right now, you're not allowed to sleep in that area. And they've said that's not necessarily a deal killer. But they want to have a second facility that is actually a residential where somebody who comes through that emergency room might spend a couple of weeks, you know, to get to the point where they're ready to get into a regular, kind of a managed living situation. It's, it's, it's a lot, I know.
It is a need.
We, we had an individual in jail, um, severe mental illness, went to the ER where he's there for roughly a day. So, we had officers, we had to provide security, to only find out that he didn't have a space at Munson, so he had to come back to jail and then to a state facility. That in itself has to be difficult for somebody, you know.
Oh, yeah, for somebody to handle.
Who's suffering from mental illness, you know, it's just, the system is so broken, so I'm, I'm glad the community's getting together to fix it, or try to.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of things we can do, and there's a limited amount of resources, so.
So, a couple of years ago, the Metro boys came to our barn to do a walkthrough, because they were curious on what if they ever had a situation where there was a fire in a facility with animals? How do you handle this? What do you do? Big questions came up beyond a fire in that facility, also came on if they get out, the police and fire that are tied up trying to get these things. So, Josh, Lieutenant Josh Springer of Metro got ahold of me, and what we have come up with is I have a list now of ten people, including Brad Olson and his farm manager, and a bunch of people on here, um, that know horses and cattle, larger stock animals, that we have titled the Livestock Recovery Team, and Lieutenant Springer's taking it to Chief, and if Chief goes with it, it's going to go to Central Dispatch. So, if there's a situation of cattle getting out, God forbid, buffalo getting out, horses getting out, or a fire that involves those, they have a list of ten people they can call that know how to handle the livestock end of it, and let them do their jobs. Let the police do what they do best, let the fire do what they do best, and let these livestock guys attempt to control the livestock. I mean, you just never know what the situations are, but, and like Brad said, if they call us out for his buffalo, bring your rifles too. Sometimes you can't stop them. But at least we're forming.
I lived next door to the buffalo, and I saw them out.
Yeah, I know, and you can't usually stop them, but it's something that we didn't have.
They're delicious.
And if Lelandoff finds out about it, they could say, hey, can you, you know, rally up your team? So, with ten of us on this list, and Central's going to have our emails, our phone numbers, our addresses, they could try all ten. Even if they got fifty percent of us to respond, that's five people that know how to handle stuff like that. Cause the fire boys were like, what do you do when you let them out? You know, do they kick? And I'm like, oh, God, we're in trouble here.
Well, the buffalo usually total police cuts.
They smash stuff.
Total twice by buffalo.
Yeah, that's a very dangerous one. The buffalo's the worst one ever. But it's possibly going to come in and be a team that Central will have the numbers to dispatch.
It's a great idea.
Sounds like interesting stuff.
You never know. If I have an extra horse, I'll call you, Chuck. You can come help.
Just say no.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
If there are no objections, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.